All right, so I don't know if everyone heard me, but we we went through and called meeting to order. The next order of business would be to approve the agenda. There are motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Courtney, second by Meredith. We need to add, make a couple additions and changes. We need to add a retirement under personnel. And also remove one of the policies that's on here, the H2 community use of school facilities policy. We'll remove that one. And then I just wanted to just add really quick under new business, just a just a quick discussion about board members rerunning again. Usually this time of year, we usually just talk about that, so that would be under new business. Is there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda with the changes? Say yes.
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 Amanda?
She did.
Motion passes. General public comment. If there's any of the public who wishes to speak tonight, you can just type your name in chat really quick. Nate. Okay, so Nate Farr, if you want to go ahead and speak?
Yeah, thank you. Are you able to hear me okay? Great. I have four pretty quick questions related to the COVID testing. I don't know if I should just ask each one and let you respond, or if you want all four, and then I can remute. What's your preference?
I think if you have questions, the we can do a couple different things. Either the superintendent can respond to them in in either like an email or responded them tonight. That's depending on the complexity of the questions.
Okay. How about if I give you all four, and then you can say, we'd like to respond to these in writing and these verbally? That would be fine. Is that okay with you? Yeah, okay. The first, just looking at the different the letter and the flow chart and the consent form for the testing, there seemed to be some disagreement between those documents about whether symptomatic children will be tested. It seemed like the letter said that symptomatic children would not be tested, they'd just be sent right home, and that the testing was for non-symptomatic, but then the flow chart seems to indicate that it would begin with a symptomatic child being tested, and also the consent form also seems to indicate that. So I just wanted to be clear whether if my child was, became symptomatic at school, if they would be tested or not. That would be the question, first question. The second question is just, will parents be notified before a child is tested? Or does the consent form say, if you've signed this, there will be testing going on throughout the days or weeks? Obviously, we'd find out after the fact, but would this be something that we would get a call saying, hey, there's been an exposure and we're doing some testing? Would we know before it's done? Or is that something that the consent form means, nope, you'll find out after the fact? That's question number two. Question number three is, once the vaccines start rolling out to children of the ages of our schools, it looks like testing would not be done for vaccinated students? And my question is just with breakthrough cases and the fact that vaccinated individuals are coming down with COVID, I'm, I would like to know why that would be? And then kind of a second thing is, okay, if we're not testing vaccinated students, how is the school planning on handling that segregation? What sensitivity will there be to making sure we don't have children feeling segregated in those moments? And then, I'm sorry, I meant to start off by saying thank you to everyone for the time and energy you put into this. I really am very happy about the testing idea. I think the, this is a great way to not be needing to quarantine asymptomatic and healthy students, so I want to thank you for finding a way to make that possible. This testing, I want to, I want to come across as someone who's in favor of the testing, and I'm glad to see that it's a possibility that's becoming available. However, I don't think I could sign that release form as it currently stands. In an age when we are being coached and taught to only sign very specific release forms, and even to add expiration dates, if release forms don't have expiration dates, this release form is very broad for the sharing of information. So the information about your minor and his or her test will be shared with and among certain Vermont agencies, contractors, and providers. It will be for public health, but also for limiting COVID. It will include name, date of birth, age, sex, race, ethnicity, teachers and counselors, attendance history, after-school participation. It's just very broad, who's going to get, potentially get this information, and very detailed about what's being shared. And I understand, we're going to need to do contact tracing in the events of a positive test. I understand that, and I know that the release would need to cover that, and I'm sure that this is boilerplate coming from something. But speaking as a parent who is enthusiastically happy to see the testing be a possibility, my children would not be getting that release form because of how broad it is. So I hope we could find a way to tailor that, to make it more specific for school use, and somehow tighten that up. So, thank you very much. Those are my four questions. You can respond to those in the way you think would be best, but if others have a similar question, maybe some, some answer now might prevent it from being asked again. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So Nate, this is Chris Sell, the superintendent. So I can answer some of these things. I know we also have Lisa Madison, the assistant superintendent, who also oversees a lot of these initiatives and programs. And we do have Jackie Becker, the school nurse for Middletown and Wells Village, so they can also answer some of these questions, or, you know, and whatever we can't answer tonight, we will also email your response as well, okay? So I guess we'll begin from the most recent, if that's okay. So the consent form, that is a form that is a statewide form that was given to us by the AWE Department of Health. We appreciate the feedback around that, Nate. That was not a form that we decided on or we chose. You know, the Department of Health said that they would like us to have these Cognito forms, and then, but when the information comes in, it auto-populates in two ways, our simple report system, which basically tells us who has consent and who doesn't. So there really isn't a paper collection for us at this particular point. We do meet with the Department of Health on a regular basis, so I can bring that information back to them. That's, some of the hesitancy around the sign of the consent form, like I said, is a very broad language that's being used in this, in the form. And if, that can narrow that down, or to a better job of communicating in terms of how this information is being used, and what it's being used for. I do know that some of the information is being used for the Department of Health contact tracing, but like you said, it's just, there is a lot of information there that, that we're working through. So like I said, I'll bring that to the Department of Health, and if I do get some more information, myself, or Lisa, or Jackie, or Rick, or Liz can share that out with the families. Because I think it's probably not just you that has these questions about what they're signing off on, so I appreciate that. I think we're looking at the, I'm going to work my way back, and just apologize, I had kind of quickly tried to take notes. So the question about vaccinated versus unvaccinated, unvaccinated students. So obviously, the, these response testing measures that the state has discussed, which is antigen testing, potential PCR, whether it be in, in home or at school, you know, you also have the surveillance testing. So these are all things that you've heard the state talk about. A lot of this is in response to trying to find a way to get kids back in school. I know that's one of the, the biggest frustration that myself and I think the teachers, administrators, and families have had is, as, under our current contact tracing and quarantining, that students have to go home for a period of time, and so, and it's disruption to their learning. We look at it from a social perspective, that they're away from friends, and so, we also found that as kids are at home, we're not seeing spread. So we may have, say, a positive case, and we send home 25 students, and we have 24 kids sitting at home for, for the most parts, who are fine, and day seven, those 24 kids return. So when test to stay came out, that was an opportunity for us to really look at a way to get these students back in, then that very next day. So there really is that disruption to learning. Understand that there would be some headaches and some hiccups. Currently, the Department of Health, as they kind of set this plan, this, this testing strategy for, for us up, has identified the unvaccinated students, the unvaccinated asymptomatic students, as the individuals that would be identified for testing. So a, currently, a vaccinated asymptomatic student would not be required to do the antigen testing, but it's strongly recommended by the Department of Health that those students do a day three to day five PCR test. So that is something which, again, I can bring back to the Department of Health about, you know, availability of tests, and if we have identified all close contacts, is this something we should be looking to do? Should we do an antigen testing for all students? I also know the strain that that does put on our resources, too. And I think the school nurses can discuss this, administrators, that if we are antigen testing a large group of students, you know, to be, you know, strain on resources, it'll be time-consuming, and I do believe right now, currently, Department of Health, as they stated, they do not believe that we need to do antigen testing for a vaccinated student who is asymptomatic. So we'll have more information on that for you, okay? The, I guess the third, your second question, my third, as I'm going backwards, will parents be notified of testing? With the, the only test that we're doing right now, or looking at doing right now, is the antigen testing, Nate. And I think you would be notified, you know, if your child would have to be, you know, if you consented, with, you know, when they're doing antigen testing. It would not be just, we're going to do random testing of your children without you knowing. The antigen testing is something which you'll know full well, you'll be dropped off, or, you know, on the bus. You'll know each day the results of the test, you know, what's going on. And it is a voluntary thing. It's something which, you know, like I said, families can opt out of at any time, whether it be initially or the way through the process. But we have no plans of testing students without any parent knowledge. If there was ever a need for a, when our school nurses feel the need to test, they would obviously do as they, you know, in a professional manner, contact families right away, let them know what's going on. But we would not be in any way ever testing this child without parental consent or prior notification. And the last thing is about the confusion around the letter, the flow charts, the consent form. I do believe in looking at the flow chart. The flow chart, while it's nice to look at sometimes, I think, you're right, it is a little confusing, because the flow chart, as I looked at it, was more along the lines of when we began like a PCR. I think when we, so antigen testing would be, would be kicked off when, if there was a positive case in one of our classrooms, say, second grade classroom, an individual has tested positive. And so what would happen is, that, that individual's tested positive, would go through the normal protocol, which is, with quarantine, would be allowed after day seven, within a negative test result to return. If not, after that, then wait till day 14. The other individuals would then go through the, either one or two paths. If those that parents have chosen to consent for the test to stay, would then go through the seven-day antigen testing. Those that have opted out of that, would then go into the same quarantine as that individual tested positive, which would be seven days out of school. On the seventh day, if they have a positive test, negative, I'm sorry, negative test, they can return. And after day 14, if they, you know, if, worst-case scenario for them. So I think that's something which, you're right, I apologize for the confusion, that was not meant to. There was a lot of information there, but really, it was more along lines of to just say that we are looking at the test to stay, the antigen testing, and that's kind of how it'd be kicked off. So I hope I answered all your questions, Nate, as best I could. If not, I can have Jackie or Lisa Madison also jump in, if that's okay.
I think that was, that was very helpful. Thank you for the information. I think it also helps, one of my kind of secondary questions was, if we wanted to opt in when a positive test happened, if we wanted to opt into the testing, because we had the option of, hey, you're either going to get tested, or you have to be out for seven days, it said something about there can be a day or two delay from signing the consent form to being able to be tested. Is that because of the?
There's information that we have to enter into a database. It's just legally, that's we have to do it. We are, we had to, every school had to receive a CLIA waiver, which basically means that we can do, you know, we have, you know, we could do this testing as well as the use for diagnosis, in terms of positive or negative test. So therefore, the consent form has to be completed, and usually, there's a day or two lag in terms of when we get that information. So as a parent myself, you know, I think if, like, I got a phone call tonight, that, hey, my daughter was identified as a close contact, my knee-jerk would be, okay, I'm going to quickly fill out the form, but it may not appear for another day or two into the system. And so there is that bit of a lag, and that's where, you know, I think we will see this, not just here, but a lot of the schools, that's, that families may not consent until there may be, may be a need to consent, or, you know, so they might, but understand that there is that lag, and also time to enter that information in the database.
Yeah. No, that, that is helpful, and that does, all of this has helped me understand a lot more clearly. I do appreciate it. I think that, yeah, you, you bringing the feedback back would be very appreciated, that I have 100% trust in our school nurse, in our school principal, in that test being done in the school. Test to stay is a great idea, and I really appreciate it. But if, if the information can't stay in that circle, that's going to put us in a position that, that I just don't think, you know, it puts you in the position of, do you want your child to be able to get back to learning, which is what we all want, but potentially at the risk of, of information being shared more broadly outside of that circle, that we don't have the same confidence in? So I appreciate your understanding with that.
I understand completely. We'll bring that back to the Department of Health. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jackie Becker?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to get my name in there, in case I was needed to answer any questions. I will say the one thing, Chris, was the question about symptomatic students. Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, that'd be great, Jackie. Thank you.
Okay, so we are not going to be testing symptomatic students with the antigen testing or the PCR testing. We're going to continue the process that we currently have in place.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I think that is part of the consent form, so that would be another thing to take back as feedback, that I believe that is actually one of the things we're signing on, on the consent.
Nate, one of the things with the consent form is, as you looked at the state, they had these variety of tests. They had the response tests, which were the antigen in the two PCR tests, or the, they identified two different PCR tests, and then you had these surveillance. What they were, I think they were attempting to do, or trying to do, was have one consent form for all the response tests. And so therefore, there is some very broad language that's being used. While we're using it specifically right now for antigen testing, they're looking at in terms of if a school would ever use PCR testing, that the families would not have to do a separate consent form for that, that, that consent would cover both the antigen and a PCR test. But that's, I think, why you have some of that broad language. They were trying to eliminate having a consent form for each test that would, you know, that the school would be providing.
That, that sounds like it's in alignment with my expectations of state government. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Or C? Anyone in chat? We will move on to the consent agenda, approval of the amendments from October 6th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion to approve the minute.
Second? Ryan, did you raise your hand? Is that a second, or?
Yeah, it was a second, sorry.
Any changes to the agenda? All right, not hearing any. All those in favor of approving the agenda, or, not the agenda, the amendment is from October 6th, say aye or yes?
Aye.
Amanda, Ryan? That's Amanda, are you there? Motion passes. Approval of the warrants. We have two warrants, warrant 193 and 196. Is there a motion to approve the warrants?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Meredith. Is there a second? Thank you, Jody. Any discussion on the warrants? I would imagine if you had any questions ahead of time to reach out. All those in favor of approving the warrants? Or Leger? George, are you there?
I'm here.
That passes. Superintendent's report. Everyone should have received, or, the superintendent's report. So I think we'll just go ahead, and if you have any questions for the superintendent, hopefully everyone had a chance to review his report ahead of time. Does anyone have any questions? I have one question for you, Chris. And it's just like, out of curiosity, the test to stay, are a lot of districts in the state already doing this, or is it just?
So this is, I think within the next week or two, you're going to see a lot of districts moving to this. We received our kits yesterday, and I think that's, you know, so they're starting to roll that out, you know, and so we'll, we'll have kits on hand, you know, obviously, there's a supply chain issue, so we're looking at, you know, I think right now, and Lisa, correct me wrong, but I think we only have like 650 kits across the SU, but we can place an order and, on a, like, every two weeks. So, but you think, you know, each, a student would take seven kits. So I think right now, we have enough kits for 92 students, but I think they're trying to spread it out for all interested districts and SEUs to do this. But I know that most of the districts that I've talked to are looking to move into test to stay, because I think, it goes back to what we were saying, some of the biggest headaches that we saw were around the quarantine, and I think that this provides us with an opportunity to get these kids back into school much quicker.
Yeah, I just, it seems like, like this, like a month ago, we were just hearing about this, and then we're already doing it.
Right, it has been pretty, it's, and I think there is, you know, and I know there are concerns, obviously, about the logistics around this, and I think that's something which, you know, school nurses, myself, Lisa, the administrators, Rick and Liz have been working through, just, our goal also is that if there is a need for antigen testing in the morning, that's, that the, it's a limited disruption to the other school, teachers in the building, that the teachers will just, you know, resume their regular instruction, and that if, you know, we have, you know, staff, I know there was a question about training, like our, our nurses have all been trained. I think they're, if there is a school staff, or myself, or Lisa, or Rick, or Liz, the opportunity to assist, we would go through a training process with the nurses, as defined by the Department of Health, as well as the manufacturers. So these are things which we have to do, but our goal is, you know, do the antigen testing, you know, get them back into class as quick as we can. But also, like I said, we're not pulling, our goal is to pull classroom teachers, to not to disrupt any other kids in the, in the school. So if we're bringing, we're antigen testing 10, 15 kids, the other kids, it's just, it's a normal day for them, and that's our, that's our ultimate goal, so.
Jody? Can't hear you.
Jody, are you muted? Still can't hear you, Jody, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can give the amendment to work good if you want. Thinking that as a curiosity, I don't know.
Jody, if there's a question, you can email me, and I'll, I can respond as well, okay?
Okay.
Oh, there you are.
Oh, I'm here now?
Yeah.
Okay. Not sure what, am I still here?
Yep.
Okay. I am just wondering why we are not taking into account at all any kind of natural immunity for children, or staff, or alike, especially since we are, seem to be making strange exceptions for vaccinated kids, although, or vaccinated staff, even though, you know, there is an enormous amount of breakthrough. I feel like that could be super helpful to, you know, know which people have natural immunity. It might cut down on many, many tests that we therefore don't have to do.
You know, and Jody, I appreciate that. I think it's one where, right now, the Department of Health, as we were working on that, is not recognizing a natural immunity in a school setting. So it's something which we can continue to discuss with Department of Health, you know, moving forward, to see if that's something that they would recognize. Lisa, you agree on that as well?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Thanks, Jody. I did just want to say that there are different guidelines for if a child has had COVID around testing. So it, depending on the length of time it has been since they were positive, there are, there are different testing protocols, and we're actually trying to clarify length of time and all of the details around that with the Department of Health right now. But children who have been exposed, there may be different windows where they wouldn't have to test for a certain amount of time, because it would be assumed that they would still potentially trigger a positive even once they're healthy post-COVID. So there are some, some pieces like that. We're just waiting for clarity around them.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? There's a lot there in that report.
You know, Eric, I do, I just want to talk quickly. In the report, there was a discussion about the portrait of graduate strategic plan. I know that the leadership team, which is just the central office administrators, and the bill administrators, and then the executive committee met with, represented from the Department of Health for Kids. What we are looking to do across the SU is do a strategic plan slash portrait of graduate. There'll be a two-step process. And what we, what we are going to do in this Friday, we'll be sending out a letter to all the communities, asking for volunteers to participate in what's called a design team. So if you've been a part of strategic plan before, or portrait of graduates, it's an opportunity for, you know, us to collect feedback from families, to really kind of look at visioning, you know, developing a vision, a mission for the SU, and looking at what our schools may look like, not just in, you know, the present, but also, you know, visioning out, developing a five-year plan. So I just want to kind of just say that we, there will be information coming out this Friday about this. If, you know, if you're interested, obviously, reaching out to, you know, Rick or Liz to let them know. But also, in that letter, we'll also talk about the time commitment, because there will be, I do believe, I think it's, you know, Lisa, correct me wrong, I think it's four or five meetings over the course of the fall and the winter. And right now, they are scheduled for in-person, but obviously, we will look at, you know, adjusting as, you know, conditions work. But, you know, but we're looking to get a representative, representation from all stakeholders, from all communities across the from all communities across the SU to participate in this process. And, you know, at the end, like you said, we will have a pretty good, you know, vision, mission as well as a five-year plan. But I know a lot of you have some very strong feelings about schools and about, you know, where we should be going. So there's a great opportunity for you to come out and be a part of the process. So I would encourage you to, to reach out to Rick and Liz and, and I am going to be sending invite, open invite to all the board members to be a part of this. So, but I know some of you are board and community members, so, and parents. So kind of tick three boxes for us, but, but information will be coming out. But I wanted to just kind of briefly just discuss this because if, like I said, a letter will be coming out on Friday detailing this.
If I did read my mind, that's exactly what I was wanting to bring up. All right. If there's no further questions for the superintendent, we will move on to the principal's report.
No, I'm sorry. I have one more thing. So tonight, after I get through this meeting, we will be sending out a guidance for winter sports. I know some of you are, we're wondering what it's going to look like. So you will be receiving a winter sports guidance, you know, across the SU. And obviously it'll be, you know, building specific in certain situations, but we, you know, guidance will be coming out tonight. If you have any questions, obviously you can reach out to myself, Rick or Liz for further, you know, questions or concerns. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So everyone should have also received the principals' reports. Well, in an effort to keep the meeting moving along, we have a long meeting tonight. Does anyone have any questions for the principals tonight? It's like everyone's getting off the hook easy tonight. Okay. We will move on to finance then. Louis, are you there?
I am. Good evening, everyone. So the first thing, just to mention in the packet, there was a two-page document called GRCSU Budgeting Tool. This was also in the RSWSU, or the, I'm sorry, the GRCSU packet. It's just sort of a budgeting cheat sheet regarding our accounting structure. It shows where our account code is and the different, different pieces of it. So when you're reviewing your budget and you have a question of what these codes mean, you can find what the common codes that we use are and what type of expenses would be coded to those, those, those pieces of the structure. At any time, if there's any questions about the account code as we're going through budget, just feel free to ask. But this is kind of something you can use over the next few months as we're going through the budget process. So if there's no specific questions about that, we'll just jump right into the budget. So in the packet was the first draft of the budget. The document you should have is 11 pages. The first page highlights all of the major changes. It's labeled summary of changes that took place in the budget that are having a financial impact. So we'll go through those and then we'll go through the structure of the budget. So the first one, so this budget includes the GRCSU First Draft Assessment. That was presented at the last SU meeting in October. They'll be reviewing the second draft in November, at which time we'll be looking for the SU Board to approve the SU budget. So by the December meeting, which is the next Wells Springs meeting, we should be looking at a final approved SU budget and those assessments will be reflected in your local budget. Includes an estimate of salary and health insurance increases. Right now we're estimating health insurance is going to increase 5.2%, which has a cost of approximately $14,000. A secondary tuition, which would be for students seven through 12. We, to calculate tuition costs, we use the current student count for this year. And then we, we estimate a tuition rate for next year, usually a 3% increase. And we take into account any students that are in sixth grade that will be moving on to seventh grade and any 12th graders that are graduating. Included in the budget is the last year's surplus, which was $210,000. And that is listed as a revenue on page two. There was a shift in staffing for, there was a shared counselor that was a one FTE that was shared 50-50 between Wells and Middletown. That counselor did shift to 0.5 in Middletown and was, their FTE was reduced to a 0.5. And then the Wells counselor was a special educator who's now split between the Wells, Wells special educator and a Wells counselor. So when you look at the budget, you'll see those financial shifts. Library wages were moved to the local school level, to the district-wide level. Any items that are highlighted are still pending and hopefully we'll have final numbers for those in the next draft. Maintenance wages are up due to the hiring of a shared facilities director that he was hired last year. And then there's two new proposed positions included in this budget. One is for a halftime interventionist. It's based on $70,000 estimate for full-time. So halftime is, the impact to this budget is $35,000. And then increasing the 0.5 counselor to full-time, which would have a $37,000 impact. So moving on to the details of the budget. Just to skip to page quickly, just page eight, you can find the totals. Right now our total expense is up by $182,000, which is 3.59%. Education spending, which is total expense minus local revenues, is up by $122,000, which is 2.58%. Education spending will be the amount we have to raise in property taxes. The reason that that amount is less than the total expense is because of this increase in surplus revenue that we had. So on page two is where the budget starts, the top section. That's where you find our revenues. I'll just go through some major, the highlights. So we're still, still waiting on some final numbers for tuition revenue. That would be people that are, students that are coming into Wells and Middletown that we would invoice them. Prior year fund balance, that's that last line under the revenue, $210,000. It was an increase of $63,000 from last year. So that's, that's resulting in an increase in revenue, which is lowering our education spending. At the bottom of page two, on the library, you can see all the variances on the library. That's where we're moving that position from the school-wide to district-wide. And those offsets will be later on in the budget and we'll get to that in a minute. On page three, under Middletown Plan Operations, something similar to library, last year actually on their budgeting, we moved that to the district-wide as well because we were hiring a district-wide facilities director and thought it would be cleaner, the whole plan operations were under district-wide. So we did have FY21 was budgeted at the school level. So we did have some actuals. When we looked to budget for next year, that section will go completely away and will only fall on the district-wide. Page four, you'll find the Wells library shift that we talked about. And on page five, you'll see the Wells plant operation shift. On page six is where the district-wide starts. So looking at counselor services. So the reduction in wages there is offset by the purchase services. And that's because that employee is currently an SU employee. So that, those, that expense is being billed back by the SU. So it's falling as a portion service. The library, we talked about that. So there, the expenses are all moving to district-wide. There is no budget for last year. Secondary tuition on page seven. So as I said earlier, we base this on the student count now. Right now we're not accounting for any new students that may move in, as well as any students that may move out. So we strictly just use a current student count. And then we take into account any students that are graduating 12th grade and moving up from sixth grade. And we estimate a tuition for each of the schools that we tuition to. Typically it's about 3%. We are still gathering some information on that. So that is still highlighted yellow. We should hopefully have some final numbers at the next board meeting. Again, those would still be estimates because families can move in and move out. Vocational, we are still waiting for the numbers from the state on what our FTE is and that will determine that expense. Plan operations at the pages, end of page seven. That increase is due to the hiring of the facilities director. And you can see there's no actuals. That's where it was all moved from the school level to the district-wide. And then the last thing I'll just point out on this, on page eight, is the special ed assessment and the general fund assessment. Those are numbers that are coming from the first draft of the GRCSU budget. The special ed budget is up at the SU level and that's resulting in an increase in your assessment of $43,000. Not only is the assessment, not only is the assessment up, but also Wells Springs portion of the assessment is, has increased based on the number of IEP students in Wells compared to the, the IEP students in the whole SU. The general fund assessment is actually on page seven and that's a decrease of $7,000. The general fund assessment at the SU is, is down about $51,000. On page nine is the food service budget. We're currently estimating that the general fund is going to subsidize the food service account by $87,000. And that's due to a number of reasons, but mainly increases in food, that has been increasing over the years. But just based on both school size, we don't serve enough meals to break even. And due to the increases in food prices that everyone's seeing, we're seeing that expense increasing and the subsidy increasing as well. And then page 10 and 11, these are the positions that are being billed back from the SU. Or 10, page 10 is the billed back positions. So the top piece are regular ed positions. The first one is the counselor. And then the second one is an interventionist. She's funded 0.3 through the grant and the other 0.7 is funded locally. And then the bottom piece are all special ed positions. These are the disallows that we talk about pretty often at the SU level and at the local level. And this represents the portion of these employee salaries that are not funded through special ed because they're work either doing duties, working with regular ed students or anything that's not special ed related. And then page 11, which is the last page, is the tuition estimates. Shows the number of students per school as well as the estimated tuition and then the total. So as far as the process goes, this budget is based on feedback that I received from both administrators as well as feedback from the board at the last, at the last Wells Springs meeting in October. I guess I'll, we'll move to take any questions at this time and then we can see if there's any feedback on things that you want to be reflected in this budget for the next meeting.
I have another question while I'm looking at page 11. Private, the tuition rates on here, these are estimates, but don't we, don't we just pay the state average for those? So is this an estimate of the state average or?
This is an estimate. Well, some of them are, so the public schools, it would be an estimate of what, it would take their announced tuition for this current year and then I estimate a 3% increase. And then for the private schools, it's taking the state average and then estimating a 3% increase.
Okay. So these numbers are, are, they're discussed against?
Correct. The announced tuitions are, come out in the beginning of January.
Yep. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Louis on, on the budget?
I do, Eric. Louis, you said something about school lunches and that we don't, we don't have enough, we don't produce enough lunches, so we're not saving money, that kind of thing. Is that just because they're smaller schools or is that because a lot of the children aren't eating the school lunch?
It's mostly because you're smaller schools. So there's just not enough, there's just not enough students in the school to break even based on, if you take into account the price to produce the meal and, or to purchase the supplies for the meal. And then the time labor to produce the meal, you're just not selling enough meals to cover that overhead.
Gotcha. Okay.
Even if you were at 100% participation, you wouldn't cover the, the cost.
Okay.
Amanda?
I was just wondering, I had thought that our, our, like our classes coming into the next year might be large for sharing and I didn't know if in both schools, if we actually had that problem. I just, I did some adding on my own and thought that we had like 29 kids in one shared class and I thought that that was above the number we were allowed for one teacher. Is that not correct?
Well, our cohorts are, our largest cohort is 16, our smallest is six. And upcoming, I would not expect that to be.
Yeah, if it's 29, we'd be taking a look at, but I haven't heard that number yet, Amanda. So if you'd share that with us, that'd be great. So we can take a look at that. Okay? Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, I think all the questions I had you pretty much covered, Louis. Going through and walking through everything. I guess if nobody has any questions and suggestions for Louis. Oh, I did have one if I can find it. Well, I won't take up any time on that. All right. So, thank you, Louis. If that's everything you, you have for tonight. We look forward to seeing you in the next draft next month.
Do you want to discuss the new positions that were proposed? Or are you fine keeping those in the budget? Do you want more detail on those?
I wouldn't mind knowing what an interventionist is and is there already one that we have? And I'm assuming it's a behavior interventionist or something like that. But is there already a person in mind or?
Can you hear me? Person, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. I'm on the end of the table. So at this time, Middletown Springs does not have any academic interventionist. Chris, you can correct me, but I think we're the only school in the SU that doesn't have any extra support for the students. And with the year and a half of COVID, everything, just the academic needs of the kids. We have great staff here. We also have combined classrooms, which creates its own challenges. And I think we need something else to help the kids catch up from the, from the year and a half of COVID and to get the kids back on track and to help support the classroom teachers. And once again, I have nothing but kudos for what the Middletown Springs staff is doing, teachers are doing to support the kids. So, yeah, so it's academic interventionist either to, to help out with the combined classrooms, to help out with the core instruction and. And yeah, so we had one two years ago, and it was taken out of the budget. Considering where we are with just the impact of COVID, and I want to do what's best for the kids and get them caught up.
So Rick, I see that it's a halftime position. Is that correct? Or and then, and then is the 70,000 budget, is that just salary, or is that like, you know, salary supplies? Like, what all is that encompassing?
So that's kind of loose. I think it's salary. I don't, Louis can answer that. I don't think it's benefits too, but.
Yeah, so the 70 actually represents a full FTE. We only have a halftime in the budget. Originally, we had put a full time in the budget. But just because the budget was up, we lowered that to a halftime right before this was sent out. So that represents total compensation, so that would be salary, benefits. And that's just an estimate this time because we're not sure who the candidate will be. And depending on what their qualifications and education are and experience, we'll determine where they fall on the schedule as well as what insurance they need. So we can see a teacher coming in based on full time, ranging anywhere between 50 to 80, 90,000, depending on where they fall on the schedule and what kind of insurance plan they take.
Okay, so just to clarify, we're not sure if it's going to be a halftime or a full time. So it could be anywhere between.
Well, in this budget, it is proposed for a halftime.
At 70,000?
No. Only halftime is in here, which is 35,000.
So when Louis and I had the conversation, I proposed a full time interventionist. But also be mindful of the voters and everything. I cut it down to a halftime. I want to be aware of the community. And I love a full time, but a halftime would have a huge impact. So and that, and once again, I want to be cognizant of the community and what the Does that answer a question, Jody?
It does. And I think it's a great idea. I think that that would be really helpful to the school and to the staff and to the kids.
Courtney?
So I just want to see, is this halftime person just for Middletown, or is it for both schools?
It's just for Middletown, but once again, I'm not trying to compare the two schools, but we're pretty close in size now. I have no one extra at the school other than my spare teacher has a small amount of time that she can help support kids on EST. So I have great teachers who are modifying, but we need extra, extra support at Middletown Springs.
My only concern there is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that Wells test results were lower than Middletown, and if that's the case, then maybe this is something that we want to consider for Wells as well.
Wells currently has a full time interventionist.
Oh, they do. Okay, perfect. Well, then that answers that. Thank you.
Okay. So the other position is the counselor, correct?
Correct.
So currently have a you basically just want to hire another point five FTE counselor. Is that how I'm reading this?
Yes, so we had a full time that was shared. That person wanted to move to just halftime, and so it was shifted to just Middletown halftime. The Wells special educator was split. Her time was split between halftime counselor, halftime special educator. So the proposal in this budget is to increase the counselor position to full time. Not necessarily for that staff member. That would be something that wouldn't have to be looked at closely. But just in general, so whether that be a new full time counsel that would come in or that person increasing the full time, that we'd have to work out, but it would be looking at a full time counselor in Wells and a halftime counselor in Middletown.
And so the thought around increasing that to a full time is to allow for more classroom guidance to occur and more small group work to be done with individual students or small group students to be able to provide more of that social emotional support as we're seeing a need for that as well.
Okay. I I think all this is important. I just have kind of like it's like a question, but like a concern. Basically, is the salary for this interventionist, is this just like an estimate? Or is this like a going rate for for pensioners?
This is just an estimate. They would be on the teacher scale.
Okay. All right, so I mean, so that could, there could be huge fluctuations. Meredith?
So is this going to be funded with like recovery money or ESER money? I know the state also is talking about SEL, social emotional learning. Is this part of that, or is this something that we're funding locally?
Both of these positions are built into the local budget. Through ESER funds, we're really trying to focus our funds on SU-wide positions and not building base, just because if we start looking at building base needs, we can really run out of money pretty quickly because there's needs in all buildings. But also, it's harder to keep the money equitably spent among schools once we start funding local, local positions.
But I am also thinking this is not this is not like, what's the term of this position? You know, it's not going to be sorry about that. I mean, this is like a permanent position we're hiring. I guess that's my question.
Both of these would be, they would be teacher positions. So they would be permanent until you had a board decision to riff either part or whole of the, either a piece or the whole position.
And we can't necessarily riff these specific positions.
I would have to check the master agreement to see if the positions are identified separately. I think so. An intervention is not a class. I don't believe so, is same as a classroom teacher. I'd have to check, though.
Yeah, okay.
And then counselor, I think would be its own position as well. Because it's a special certification for counselors, so that would be its own category. I'd have to check, though, on the interventionist.
Any other questions? Thoughts on these positions? Well, I think if Middletown Springs doesn't have an interventionist and needs one, I think it's definitely something that should be considered. That's my thought. I don't know how everyone else feels. At least a half FTE.
I certainly feel that way too, but I can, I can kind of hear where Meredith is coming from. Middletown Springs residents do get pretty persnickety about passing the school budget. So I think that we have to be mindful of the school budget raising every year and, and you know, this being a permanent, anyway, just naturally it raises every year and then but I mean, I am a grants. I think that an interventionist would be great.
Meredith?
Yeah, I just looked up quickly and I'd heard about this before about the SEL. And I'm wondering, are we not involved in this, or are we not? Is this not something that's appropriate for us? It's, I thought it was about these kinds of issues and helping, helping recover from, from this pandemic and.
Meredith, what are you referring to, Meredith?
It's called SEL Vermont, part of Vermont's COVID education recovery efforts.
Correct. That is one of the, that, yes, social emotional is one of the buckets that we have to identify in our recovery plan. And so I think what Louis was saying, while we identify the social emotional, one of the things we're just, we're trying to be aware of is staffing positions with ESER funds on local buildings because, you know, if we would look at, you know, adding say, a staff position in each building, we could burn through our ESER money real quick. And that's not to say that we, we necessarily are saying no to it. We just have to be very mindful in terms of how we are spending those dollars. I think you're right. There is that social emotional piece around the counselor, and also there's an academic recovery piece around the interventionist that would fit perfectly within ESER and the recovery plan. But we just, like I said, our concern always is the staffing, and then what happens when the money goes away and then all of a sudden it hits the local budgets? And then what are we doing with that? So.
Well, and so that's why, I mean, I was asking in terms of this is a position we need right now and may need for a year or two. But long term, you know, are we really going to be needing this position anymore? And so that's why it seems to me it's more fitting that it should be part of the ESER funding and not on our local budgets. I really feel like we're, we're being made to do something that we're going to get stuck with anyways. So if we at least started the first year or two, seeing if it is something we're going to continue to need, then, then we look at that. But I feel like we're kind of getting shorted here.
Meredith, there also is still part of the AWARE grant, which the five years is up at 2023. And so, you know, we've got a lot of work to do within that, but even with that work, we're still seeing there's a need. So just to kind of provide a little bit more background to it, but completely understand your point and what your question is and your concern. So I definitely hear what you're saying about.
Yeah, I mean, because the state is providing this opportunity for, for schools to, you know, fund this extra help through ESER, and instead, we're kind of going backwards and I don't know.
So just two quick comments. So the SU did hire an SEL coordinator who's working with all schools. It's more of an upper level, creating plans, working with staff, not so much working with students as much, I don't believe. And then the other thing I would say is we're currently working with ESER II money. We do have a plan on spending all of that money probably by beginning of next year. We'll start spending ESER III money next year. Our plan is to use ESER III money over two years based on our current positions that we have hired. So I mean, if we start looking at adding positions to that, local positions, we would potentially only get one year out of ESER III. But so that would be a GRCSU board discussion. And not anything we can decide at the local level.
The interventionist that's at Wells, is that a full time position? Has there been consideration to turn that to a shared position, or is that not practical?
Given her schedule and the impact with kids, I would think having one in each building would be more practical.
I just thought of that.
Case load is fault, I guess would be my short answer.
So just, we did have a full time classroom teacher two years ago. We took it out of the budget at the time. It felt like it was a wise move. It was pre-COVID. So I have no problem taking things out if needed, but I come to the board that equity, we do very well here at Middletown Springs from what we have here, but it really is becoming very evident that there is a gap in equity. That I really think somehow needs to be addressed. Okay.
So just to be clear, the academic interventionist is, we're looking at this, whether it's halftime or full, this is going to be ongoing as far as position is concerned.
Well, it depends if we can get out of the, so looking at all the things that we're starting to put in place. The university design learning, all this social emotional learning that we're doing to help support the kids. My ultimate goal is that we can go back to where we were. There's a lot of good things going on. There's a lot of factors that are adding to this. But, you know, if we can't help move the needle on these kids now, I work for the impact.
Rick, can you specifically shape up, like, when you say go back to where we were, are you speaking in terms of academically, like getting students to their grade level, or?
So that's a great question. So clarification, back where we were, when we had a normal classroom where the kids were interacting, the impact, one of the half year, almost half year out of school, the impact, just that alone, the impact academically was huge. Then last year, not to be able to do some of the normal educational practices. And then just the whole social emotional end of COVID and uncertainty is the impact of it. So we can get back and back to a normal time and, and you know, back to the accustomed educational practices. So that's going to be my goal. Especially after using all these supports that we're putting in place for the grant, through the recovery act that we're doing right now to help support kids.
Courtney, Amanda, Ryan, thoughts?
I kind of agree with Meredith that it would be nice for ESER funds to be used for this. I would be interested in knowing what the ESER funds are being used for currently to make sure that Middletown and Wells are getting equitable amount of those funds. And I kind of think it might be a good idea to bring it up to a GURKSU meeting.
Okay.
We did provide details of what ESER was funding at an earlier meeting. I believe it was October, but it may have been September. There was a breakdown of ESER I and ESER II. It was provided at both the SU level and the local level.
Amanda?
I guess I, I just wonder, like, I'm absolutely not opposed to this additional support. I just wonder, are we sure it's like a part time thing?
are we sure it's like a part-time thing to catch kids up because of COVID or is it something long-term that we should change instead and look at that now? And I I do think we need to support the kids and we need this person absolutely, but I would be curious to see if it definitely is COVID-related or if there's something else that may be playing a role.
Well, I would add that uh between Chris and Lisa are going to be coming to the school to walk through observations on on what we have for uh our educational practices, UDL. So you know, I welcome that. Uh Chris, if you see things that we could change, I and the staff, we'd certainly be welcome. But um yeah.
And I guess I'll add, going well, um students who are on EST, which is supported by the interventionist, is it's targeted. So the teachers have to collect data on things that they're noticing students are um needing more support within the classroom. And there's a process to that and um you know, there has to be data collection and and intentional twenty, thirty minutes a day with the interventionist pushed into the classroom or that's what needed for each student um for them. And so it it really helps us look at the data side to that, too. And then again, be able to address what was just asked about, you know, what do our tier-one practices look like and and all of that. So, you know, I really value having an interventionist. We're fortunate to have a full-time that was there when I arrived. Um and the staff member who is our interventionist is incredible. Um and I think we've seen a lot of growth in some students and then students who are not making growth. We have um a process of which we can then refer out for special education. And so it's been really helpful for us to be able to to point the kids in the right direction and to get the supports around them that we need and to have that collaboration amongst interventionists and classroom teachers to be able to what they can be doing in the classroom. It's it's been really instrumental and we're starting to see growth. Um obviously not as much as we'd like because of the setbacks of COVID, but at the same time, you know, we're little by little, you know, making that growth for the kids.
Ryan?
Um I just wanted to start off. I I'm a hundred percent in favor of all the support we need to give to the school. I I see every day that it's a struggle at Middletown. It it definitely doesn't seem like we have an adequate amount of staff. Um they're they're doing the best they can. I see that. But there seems to be a struggle to um have people. But I guess I'm having a hard time understanding. It it sounds as though, do we need another teacher or is this person? I I'm I'm trying to understand if it's a social emotional or if it's academic or I I mean, I I feel as though a counselor should be providing the social emotional and I absolutely think another teacher or someone focusing on the academics is crucial right now. That would be great. But I guess I'm still trying to understand what that role is and you know, if they're going to be spending time collecting data analyzing, I mean, the focus is really going to be getting these kids up to speed educationally, where they need to be academically. So I guess a little more clarification on the role would be would be great for me.
So really, it's two different things. So we have Wells talking about our our counselor, but then Middletown Springs, I guess you could call it a half-time classroom teacher. That might be a better uh way to call it. So back when we had a a half-time extra classroom teacher, combined grades, that extra half-time teacher would take, uh say, say the combined secondary grade, that teacher would focus on math for those two grades. The other folk, the teaching in the classroom would focus on ELA. So you'd have that really intense grade level instruction that we have one teacher trying to do both grades and in a normal situation, our staff could can make it work, but with everything, the deficits that we're trying to overcome at this point, uh going back to that that half-time teacher to do that direct instruction and then also that the smaller groups that we have could do the intervention work, too, that design, the extra help that the student, knowing the student could actually give that more closely tailored uh support. So maybe classroom teacher slash interventionist is a better term.
And Ryan, I was I was speaking about the intervention role that Rick was just talking about. Our school counselor would focus just on the social emotional because they have the background and certification for that. So an interventionist does not have that same credential.
Thanks, Liz. Thanks, Rick.
Amanda?
Thank you. And I I one hundred percent support you, Rick, and I I want to see this support for the kids. I guess my question would be, do you feel like a full-time teacher is more beneficial for you rather than a shared position? Because I I see, I I guess I see myself, like, I I feel like this is what we're seeing in the combined classes, and that's why I was wondering if you thought it was a COVID setback or just a a combined class setback, not because the teachers are doing anything wrong. They're doing their best, but we're expecting a lot of them to teach two grades at the same time. And if you think it would help you with a full-time teacher instead, maybe we should be looking at that.
So that's a great question about combined classrooms. We we've had combined classrooms here, eleventh year, and we've always had uh two, a a couple of combined grades together. And they do work and uh uh the strategies, how to do it. And then so in a greedy way, I'd say, yes, I would love to have a full-time, but but I think um I want to put out to the to the community what we could get away with that would move the needle, respects uh the taxpayers. And I don't come to this school board lightly suggesting this. Because once again, we we have a great staff here, but we are bare bones. And um and I'm not complaining about that, it's just the way it is. And an extra teacher would make a difference. And I think going back to equity, um it brings equity that I guess I really hadn't even thought of that we were missing. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I I understand where you're coming from and I I respect that you say you come lightly. I just I feel like with our growing classes and such, too, if if this interventionist is going to be a part-time solution for the class sizes we have now, maybe we really should be looking at that addition in both schools. And even though the cost would increase, it would greatly benefit the students and the staff. And we do have great teachers in both schools. And I I don't know, I guess maybe I would like to see kind of what those numbers would look like long-term as our classes are growing. And maybe I I respect your short-term fix. I think it's great that that you came up with that. I just, I'm trying to look long-term for you, I for bo- both of you.
Meredith?
Um are are we actually having numbers that are substantially increasing in either school?
So Middletown Springs, we've gone up from we're al- we're almost seventy now. So we've actually come up to ten, ten students. So I I like to think that's a trend.
We are eighty. Um and so that is since I started, we are at nearly a hundred. Some of those are homeschool students right now. I would anticipate we'd be coming back before they're moving on to seventh grade. But we would reach a hundred with the ones that are out at home. Which is
Yeah, and I'm I'm kind of seeing, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, but I'm seeing by 2023, we'll have twenty-three kiddos in one class with one teacher just in two years and our pay and pay is even bigger. I'm assuming Middletown's seeing the same thing. So I guess I'm just trying to think long-term here rather than a short fix. Maybe we need to look at the big picture.
I, yeah, I'm trying to to put a year on that combining, and I think it's a couple of years out. Looking at the current second and third grade, if they were to stay together in fifth and sixth, would be one of the larger classes we've had.
Courtney?
So if those trends are correct and Middletown is growing and Wells is growing, I think it might not be a bad idea that we do have this half-time position in the budget now in anticipation that down the road, we're going to need a full-time. So rather than having that large jump in the budget in one year, it kind of gradually increases over time. I think from a budget perspective and from a taxpayer perspective, that might be the a a nice thing to do, maybe? Just my thought.
I kind of agree. I considering that um the budget is up, what is it, two point five percent? Eight percent? Um even with the plus, it's uh it it's kind of staggering that um that it's gone up that much, I think. Um out of all the things that uh we could add to the budget, um student support, um would be um significantly important, my thought.
And I also think that if if this is truly an interventionist, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was always under the impression that an interventionist was strictly guided to work with kiddos that were below a certain grade level behind. I think it was like one or two grade levels behind in certain areas. So if that's the case, I think that would be fantastic to get some kids back up to where they need to be. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but.
I I think it can be whatever you want it to be. Uh my conversation at the staff meeting today, uh I had a conversation with my two classroom teachers, combined grades. Um they would be very excited for that quote interventionist slash classroom teacher to focus on that that core uh instruction material from our reading and math programs. And our groups are our classes, our individual classes are small enough that that a a good teacher could provide, also provide that 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 tiers uh that interventionist support, too. So I I guess, once again, I'd go back to say probably a better category is interventionist slash classroom teacher. I think for Middletown Springs, I think that's a more accurate description than than strictly interventionist.
Amanda?
I agree with Courtney that a gradual increase is is definitely better and definitely more accepted, more easily accepted. Um Rick, do you only have one shared classroom or do you have more than one shared classroom?
We have two shared classrooms, second and third, and fourth and fourth.
Right. So technically, if we were talking about increasing teachers for everybody, it would be a total of three because Wells has one. So that that's definitely a lot. But I I'm in agreeance with Courtney that starting small is better than not, but just know that I'm on your team and I want to make sure that we definitely have enough teachers for everybody to help the staff and the students and and I'm just, I'm thinking long-term for you, so.
So uh Louis, is uh is funding these positions with ESSER money possible? I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here, like, if for our second draft, um if there was an alternative to fund this, if if something like that could be brought back.
It's not something I could fully answer tonight. I'd have to bring it back to the team and and get back to you at the next meeting.
Okay. I'm just thinking along the lines of um of what, everything that's been said tonight, so. Do you want to add anything else to add? Are there questions? George? Not quiet?
No, I'm I'm just thinking if it could be the salary split somehow, part ESSER money and part local. Uh uh that's the only thought I have.
I think there's enough of a need. I'm sorry I didn't raise my hand. This is Ryan. Uh it it definitely sounds like there's a real strong need for somebody in there. So maybe to George's point, if we could split the funding, knowing that a lot of this is because of COVID, that hopefully in two years, we won't have these issues, if that's possible, because I think there's there's just such a need for it.
And and maybe a split could help sell it as well. I I don't know, just a thought.
Okay. And um and the counselor position as well, um we've been talking primarily about the interventionist. Okay, uh Jody?
Um so obviously not right now, but I think that in the spirit of, you know, like Rick said, wanting to get back to normal, I think that there are a number of things that we could also talk about to get things back to normal. Um that we don't seem to ever have time to talk about or put on the agenda, like getting parents back in the building. Um you know, having opportunities for kids to show off their talents at school. Um you know, things like that. And and that's not to set aside this interventionist, but um all of those things are still very much contributing to the poor, you know, masks. All of these things are very much still contributing to the downfall of the social emotional um movement of these kids.
Well, Jody, I'll respond to uh everything but to my ask. I think what we look at is you'll see with the winter sports guidance uh that we will see a bit of a shift in terms of accessibility to buildings uh and things on those lines. So you you talk about this return to normal. I think we uh you will see some some things, I don't say opening up, but you'll see a shift, uh but still be done uh you know responsibly and safely. Okay? So Rick and Liz will be uh loop you in on those things as we move forward.
All right, cool. Thank you. Appreciate it, Louis. Good night. See you. Hey, you've already
Jody, you're not muted.
You've already and your shirt's inside out.
You're not muted.
I I don't know if that helps uh to answer your questions about the the two positions, Louis, but I think I think if it's something that um, like I said, as a suggestion, uh to bring back in the second draft with some alternative for um funding, I guess. Uh so if there's nothing else, uh uh we'll move on. Is that everything, Louis?
Yes, I have enough to go by for now.
All right, thank you. Okay. Personnel. Uh we have uh contracts, recommendations. Everyone received that. After-school program pillar? I I'm not sure if I've seen that one. Is that?
That's, that has been a position that uh that Susan's had since I've been here, so.
Okay. Okay, a motion would be in order for uh contract recommendations.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract recommendations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Ryan, second by George. Is there any further discussion on these? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 He knows? Is that a yes, Meredith and Ryan?
I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain? Okay. Ryan?
It's a yes for me. Yes.
That motion passes with one abstention. We have one retirement. Everyone should receive this, this has extra materials. I'll move to accept the retirement for Robert Hovar. Hovar, sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you, George. All those in favor of accepting the retirement?
Uh, aye.
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 Ryan? Are you there? Okay, a motion carries. All right. Full business. Tuition, religious school updates. So we had this. Let me see if I can find it here. Earlier this year, we went through and had discussion about tuition to religious schools. And we essentially just made a motion and gave authority to pay that tuition. And that was for just last school year, I believe. Correct, Louis?
That is correct. The motion that was made last year was for FY21 tuition.
Okay, so we're looking to do that again tonight, and it's just to basically give business manager superintendent direction, just like as we did before. So except for the FY 20 21, 22 school year. So the motion is I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and make the motions if I have it in front of me. I'll move to proceed with tuition payments requested for the FY21, 22 school year. Fit full tuition charge students attending public high school in Vermont or in an adjoining state or a public or approved independent school in Vermont functioning as an improved area career technical center or independent school meeting educational quality standards as per statute 824. Eight. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Meredith. Is there any discussion on this? Does anyone have any questions? That relates to this? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Any no's? Abstentions? Meredith, was that a yes?
Oh yeah, I already said yes. Sorry. I thought you were waiting for Ryan. I think she had to leave or he's not here at the moment.
Yeah, honestly, it's it's hard to tell when, sometimes I think it might be easier just to do a roll call. Like, you know, being the only one here, so.
Or you could just ask for anyone who is against it. I think that's how they had suggested you do it.
Yeah, Ryan had mentioned that she was gonna maybe have spotty in and out service, but was gonna do her best, so.
Yep, yeah, she emailed me ahead. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Transportation committee. So at our, at our previous meeting, we were talking about well, well, I'll just make it short. Last year, two years ago. Thank you. Well, we had a transportation committee. The point of the transportation committee was to recommend to the board to, you know, provide recommendations for transportation for the district. Essentially, that work wasn't finished. Last, I, the last I have for documents was that we had a draft recommendation, but nothing was carried through. So it's on the agenda tonight just to talk about to bring, finish the work of this committee. So the board has a, a direction to move or recommendations. You know, potentially for a transportation policy that fits the district, basically. So I guess who would want to be on that committee? Well, everyone jumped out at once.
I, I believe I was, so I'll do it again.
Okay. I, I think we would, we would probably be looking for at least just three board members, obviously.
If nobody else is willing, I can jump in. But if somebody else is available, I can step back.
Okay. I'll, I'll probably sit on that. Just because I was there as well. But, you know, did anyone else want to participate in this before I? Okay?
I'm just trying to jog my memory. I, I think what we, what we reached was the consensus that we would leave the status quo as is and address any request for transportation if it came up from Middletown Springs. Does that sound correct?
Yeah, that's what I have. Somewhere in my pile of paper here. I, I have, what I have is a draft recommendation that the committee was supposed to next meet on and come up with a finalize, but yes, you are right. That's essentially what it was coming down to, but it wasn't, it wasn't finished work. I, I don't, I don't think anything's really changed since then, but as opposed to just bringing that to a board meeting, I think it would be good to just take the time outside of a regular board meeting and have that discussion. And, and just finish it up.
Okay, that sounds good, but you're not aware, and, and let me ask Rick. You're not aware of any transportation issues coming up since we addressed this?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well. All right, so we'll, we'll figure out a time with, with that later, so. I just wanted to try and get that established and, and let the board know where we're going with it and why. Okay, next up is, just for elections coming up, reelections. I believe we have three people who would be rerunning and, you know, just find out if, if they're basically, who's rerunning and if they are or not. Essentially, the only reason why is, is if, if there was a vacancy to come up to, to put that out there, so. And I believe Jody, George, and Courtney?
I will rerun, although I never really ran in the first place, so I might need some direction as to how to do that. But, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to continue being on the board should the public like me to.
Yeah, perfectly. Just go down to the town office and see the clerk, get a petition.
Okay, and, okay.
You do need signatures this year. Last year you did not, but you do this year.
Okay. Do you know how many, Meredith? Or does town clerk know?
Patty knows, yeah.
Okay.
George?
Yep, my intention is to run.
Okay, and Courtney?
I still need to give it some more thought, but I am thinking about not rerunning.
Okay.
Just life has gotten very chaotic with three kids in three different schools and I'm in Queensberry right now for my son's swim team practice, and so it just, it's getting to be a lot.
Okay, that's understandable. All right, yeah, so, yeah, whatever you decide, at least everyone's aware, so. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to policy. We have quite a few policies in here. These are all second reads. So I guess tonight we'll be looking for a motion to adopt these policies.
Is there a reason you took out the, was it facility use? Policy? Is that because it's not a second read, or?
Uh, yes, no, that, that will be coming back to the policy committee.
Okay.
We approve it tonight, that would that would throw a wrench in the works. And I, and I will say that, you know, the policy committee did review these and, and recommend. So, and we're reading them again for the, for the second time, so. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to move these second reading of the policies. Approve them, I guess, is?
For adoption.
Right, that's what I.
I will second it.
All right, thank you. Any motion by Meredith, second by George? Any further discussion on these policies? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Any no's? Motion carries. All right, we're just going to skip down. We do have an executive session tonight. Well, we're just gonna skip down and just quickly go through meeting dates really quick while everyone's here. So as mentioned at our last meeting, we still have our board goals to finish up that we started back in July. And I do have some dates for that if I see everyone, and I, and I guess what I want to know is, I kind of want to see how the board wants to handle this. Do we want to just do a separate meeting that has a facilitation? And, and do board rolls as similar to how I, I reached out to everyone a couple of weeks ago? I know everyone's got different schedules and busy with life, and so I just want to try and make, make this the easiest way possible. We, it is, we could potentially try and combine this into a regular board meeting. But as you know, sometimes these meetings can carry on and, and so I have for, for Kathy to come back. November 8th, 17th, 18th, and 20th. The 20th is on a Saturday, so anytime on that Saturday. All these dates are after five, other than that Saturday. November 29th, December 12th, and December 7th.
Other than the Saturday, all of these times are six o'clock or after, or 3:00 or what time was she available?
Anytime after five, so it would most likely be the similar format of like five to, five to eight, you know? If we were to combine and do a facilitation and the board goals.
Do you feel like the facilitation is an important piece, or do you feel like it's something we could accomplish as a board without the facilitation?
I think it's important.
I believe it helps to move things along and, and make the most out of our time.
Yeah, well, I mean, the the facilitation from Susan Holson at the VSB, it, it would be centered around board work, central work of Vermont School Boards, I should say. So it's I think it's important, but that's just, that's just my opinion.
Is this something that would have to be done in person like the last time, or we do it remotely?
I would say to just accommodate everyone that oh, that's, I, I think the board goals should be in person, but the facilitation part can be remote. And, and that's kind of the the hard part with, with everyone's busy schedules, I would say.
I'm, I'm not opposed to in person at all. I just, unfortunately, I work until five, so the earliest I could get to either school would be 5:30. So I could either join late or if we started later, I'm sorry, I, I don't know if I'm the only person with that schedule, but I just, I don't leave work until five.
Yeah, and, and essentially the time, if, if we factor in a few hours, doesn't mean that it's going to be all used. So if, if we did do, you know, something like 5:30 to 8:30, I don't know how that works for, for everyone's schedule.
I hate to be the difficult one, but unfortunately I can't do Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays due to swim team practice.
Okay.
Eric, why don't we focus on Kathy? We can, we can talk about Susan a little later. Think Kathy, if we had to choose, I think Kathy's more important of the two.
I agree, yeah.
So maybe we just focus on that, and then we can talk about Susan later.
Okay.
Just to avoid one, another event.
I think essentially, kind of it was gonna come down to that. So, for board goals. Let me see.
November 18th, is that one of the days? It's not a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, and it's not a weekend? November 18th, is that one of the days? It's not a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, and it's not a weekend?
That works for me.
Works for me, too.
That's good for me as well.
I can also do November 18th.
Okay, do, do we just wanna do our, since we're just doing just board goals, start at 6:00, like a regular board meeting time?
Sounds good to me.
Me, too.
6:00 is great for me.
Okay. How does that work for you and Rick?
Rick's at your conference tonight, so we're already up until 6:00. Nope. Conferences won't be done by then, so that's a non-issue. But my point is, is we're right here for you.
Yeah.
It actually, it's probably the, a good time to do that, so.
Okay.
Just conferences at Wells?
Both schools, but they're going in Tuesday, so.
Okay.
Alright, yeah, oh. So we're gonna do this one in person. How does, how does everyone feel about that, first of all?
Fine for me.
I'm okay.
I'm good with that, and after the reminder of conferences, I believe I picked an evening conference anyway, so I'll be there, too.
Meredith?
Yep, yep, that's fine.
Location?
Should we?
Either one's good for me.
Should we do Wells since we did Middletown at the first one, or does it matter with travel for Susan?
This would be with Cathy.
Cathy, sorry, Cathy.
No, she lives right in Middletown, so I don't think it would be an issue. I'm fine with that, that sounds Okay, so we have a date and a time and a location. I think it's, I think it's important to finish this up, and then we will figure out something with, with Susan Holson. Amanda?
I'm sorry, to confirm, it's the 18th at 6 o'clock in Wells?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then our next regular meeting will be on December 1st.
I will not be at that meeting, just an FYI.
Okay. Thank you for the heads up. You must be going on vacation, huh?
Actually, I am.
Okay. Alright, so we do have an executive session. We, we need an executive session that could talk about the budget still, right? Alright, so I think what we'll do is, is board members have a separate link for the executive session. We will move into executive session for personnel and superintendent evaluation is what, personnel and personnel superintendent evaluation. So, does someone wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion to move into executive session.
I'll second.
Alright, so we'll move into executive session at 8:08, and we will come back there, after we get out of executive session, we won't have any other business, but we will probably come back to this meeting link and basically adjourn. But if the public wants to hang out. Alright, alright, so thank you, everyone. I see you on the other link. Oh, and we're inviting Louis and Chris.
Well, I don't think it's fair. Okay.
And then, everyone else, have a good night.